Welcome to the ISB webinar. School Board Service Equity and Excellence for All, Are You Ready? Today, your engagement will make this webinar a better learning experience for all. So you will find on your screen somewhere your pain, open up the Q and A window, and submit your questions anytime. We will respond to your questions throughout the webinar, and we really want this to be interactive, so don't be shy, send us your question. My name is Luann Gavist, and I'm on the Board Development Team here at ISB, and I'm one of your presenters, and with me is my colleague and sidekick.
I am Harry Heiligenthal, also on the Board Development Team at ISB, and thanks for participating today.
And Jesse, you want to make sure that your computer's unmuted, I can see that it's muted, so, because we're going to roll right over to you two now. So we have two practitioners that are joining us today who are going to be lending their guidance and insight, and we're thrilled to have them with us, and we're going to let them tell a little bit about themselves. And Rhonda, let's start with you, would you introduce yourself, please?
Sure, Rhonda McReina, I'm a board member with the Waterloo School District. I am also Director of Diversity and Inclusion at Hopi Community College. I'm a counselor by trade, I did counseling here for 15 years before I moved into this position, so I've been in this position for the last four years. I've also been on the school board for the past four years.
Thanks, Rhonda, Jesse?
My name is Jesse Howard, I'm a school board member for New London Community School District in Southeast Iowa. I also serve as ISB Director, District Director of District Nine in Southeast Iowa. I've been on the school board for four years now, running for reelection next month. Our school district's a very rural school district, just over 500 students. I look forward to sharing with you the insights and things that I've learned over the last four years.
Thank you so much. Well, it's no accident that we selected Jesse and Rhonda, they have lots of experience and guidance to share, plus they represent two districts that are very similar in some ways but different in others, so we're really looking forward to hearing from them and all the practical strategies and thoughts they'll share today. So, thank you. So let's do a quick poll, Harry, and let's see who is joining us today. So I'm going to launch the poll, and unless you have a pop-up blocker on your computer, which sometimes happens, everybody should be seeing a poll now, and we're just asking you to vote, weigh in, this little survey to see, tell us what role you, who you are, kind of just gives a nice snapshot.
Who's in the room besides the four of us?
Right. So we'll just give people just another second or two. So the options are, are you a candidate, are you a former board member, are you a current board member, a superintendent, staff member such as a business manager, board secretary, or other? So let's look at the results and see what folks said. But, Harry?
It looks like this is aligned with other webinars we've conducted this fall, is heavier participation by candidates, about half, and then about a quarter are current board members and other.
Yep.
Always great to see another there, interested community member, whoever it might be.
Absolutely, okay.
Time to close the poll and slide on, thank you.
Right, okay. Let's review our goals for today. So our goals are to discuss how board service is about serving all the students of your district, so we'll talk more about that, what that looks like and how important that is. We'll also explore what research and experience tells us on how board teams can and do make a significant difference in student learning, particularly when they play certain key roles well, we'll explore what that looks like. And then we'll talk about the challenges that boards face in keeping the focus on students, but just as importantly, how they overcome those challenges at the board table.
Absolutely, and it's an interesting thing, Luann, we hear this every election year, board members, new board members are elected, they come on eager, ready to go, three or four months later, you pump into them, and they're sometimes surprised at how challenging it can be to keep the focus on kids and their learning, the heart of why most board members run for the board, so.
And that's probably very surprising to people, for sure.
Yes, yes.
So let's look at our first goal, which is really looking at the big picture of board service at the high level view, and that's ensuring a high and equitable education for every single student in the district. School boards are charged with providing oversight for two of the community's most precious resources, taxes and children. But today, we're going to focus on the fun stuff, we'll let our school finance folks focus on the taxes, we're going to be focusing on the moral obligation that school boards have to govern well and ensure all children receive a quality education. This is a reminder for some of you who might have participated in our earlier webinars, that a quick reminder that authority is granted to the board as a whole, not to each member individually. And so as a collective body, board members work together as a governance team with the superintendent to make decisions that will best serve all the students in the community. But when we say "all," what do we mean, all students? We'll dig in a little bit deeper on that. Well, "all" means "all," regardless of what neighborhood you live in, or for some districts, which town you live in, or which constituency elected you, the board team serves all students. But this can be a challenge for the public and for candidates especially when the roles of boards aren't well understood.
There is, and I'm going to hold off so I don't steal the thunder of the next slide.
Okay.
My tongue today.
But you can certainly weigh in, as I know you well.
Sure.
This is one of our favorite quotes here at ISB, and I'm just going to read it, and then we'll comment, and this came from a school board member a few years ago that said, "Of course, parents want the best for their own children, that's their job. As a school board member, it's my job to want the best for each and every child." We think that captures the essence of board service perfectly.
Bet, if you're wondering what we mean by "all kids," that says it pretty well. Yes.
So, let's move on to now, or give our practitioners a chance to weigh in now. Rhonda and Jesse, would you please think about that quote and then respond to this question? As a board candidate, when it comes to serving all students, what's important to keep in mind? And as a new board member, what helped you grow in your viewpoints and understandings around that? Rhonda, would you please start?
Sure. For me, I've always believed in that quote, that education was a great equalizer. And I also believe that equity in education was critical if, you know, we are to effectively and successfully function well as a country, as well as within our individual communities. So for me, really understanding or having that principle was critical in the concept of serving all children. That includes all diverse learners, regardless of their parental background, regardless of their ability, regardless of what zip code they lived in. As a board member, you have to be responsive to all children.
Makes a ton of sense, and I think your comment about, you hold it as a principle, that's something that's near and dear to you, and it's just going to be the way you operate, isn't it?
Well, what helped me to grow was during our building business, because sometimes we tend to live in our own little village, you know, I guess you could say, and it wasn't until I became a board member, and I had to do my building business with elementary, middle, and high school, that I was able to look at some microcosm that was our district, and what type of learners we had, what type of teachers we had, what type of teaching and learning mandates that came down from the state. Because of course, my son went to school in the district, so I knew about his, you know, issues, but I was fascinated to learn about the whole district and all the different types of children that were served.
That's a great insight, Rhonda, you transition, you're still always going to be a parent, but you have to start seeing it from a view different than, you add another view into it, that's much broader than just your parent hat.
But you have to get out into those buildings so that you can see something different and learn about things that you are not used to knowing about.
And seeing those little faces, or bigger faces, or the range of faces, puts the personal side to it.
And learning about the challenges that the principals and the teachers have to deal with.
Jesse, what about you?
I would agree, you know, with what Rhonda said there, that once you're in that position, things change quite a bit as to what you really thought was there. You know, I look at it from initially as a new board member, it's my children, what was important for my children and for my family and my interests, and then as, once I got onto the board and I really looked at it, and instead of looking at it in the micro perspective, really getting that macro perspective of, it's all children from all walks of life, and as a board member, that's your job, is to help provide that vision for the school. You know, it's, I think it's important for candidates to keep in mind, and for board members to constantly keep in mind, that we invest a lot into our children, we invest into our administrators, and our teachers, and everybody in the school, therefore, we need to invest in board members as well. And one of the things that I learned a lot as a new board member was, how much ISB can provide for those volunteer board members. You know, you come into this position and you really don't know anything about public school governance maybe, so you have to learn, and in order to do that, you're going to help all children, and not just maybe your micro perspective or what you thought was most important. It also helps you, as a new board member, to really see that not everybody comes from the same walk of life or the same viewpoint as you, and that's where you can help service and facilitate a higher education for all students.
And I want to just add that it is critical as a new board member that you attend those ISB conferences, because not only will you learn about your microcosm, as it were, you'll learn about statewide some of the challenges, and listen to other school board members, and how they deal with some challenges, so you really need to make sure that you go to those conferences.
Well, and we know from our own research and practical experience that the commitment to learning is one of the most essential skills that effective board members have, and so attending ISB conferences is certainly an important way to do it, but you also can commit to learning at your board table together as a board team, and that's just as critical. Harry?
And a related thought, too, I wanted to circle back, wisdom Rhonda shared about getting familiar with what's actually happening in schools beyond just your own parent hat or perspective, and basically, or I think virtually every superintendent in the state would welcome a chance, and many provide the opportunity after new members are elected to schedule some tours and visits so that they can help plan out some visits that will provide new board members with a real broad view around a lot of programs and initiatives that can be really helpful to them, so.
And I think it's great, too, that, you know, leave the boardroom every now and again, and really see what's going on during the day. Our board meetings at our school district are at seven o'clock at night, you know, the school is quiet, there's no students running around, you don't get to see teachers, you don't get to see all the support staff and everything that makes a school run. So when you do take that time during the day to do a walkthrough with the superintendent and the administrators, and ask teachers, you know, did that decision, did it work? Did it change? Did it make things more convenient for you, or did it make it more of a challenge? And a lot of times, you know, as a board member, unless you're asking those questions, people don't typically come to you and tell you the things, the decisions you made that made it more challenging, they will tell you when it's made it more convenient, but not always will they tell you it's more challenging. So when you're able to see that in the classroom and watch students utilizing their computers or utilizing, reading books and still writing in cursive, or you seem, you know, Eli just got done eating lunch with the elementary kids, you know, and how excited they are to eat school lunch, you know, to not, "I'm going to eat school lunch," and I love eating the school lunch there, you know, so when you see that, they see the value that you are adding to as a board member, that you have a vested interest and you do care, and you want to make the best decisions for all students, not just a select few.
Jesse, I know you just like to eat lunch with those little chocolate milks.
I like the chocolate milk, and they, everybody there is in a good mood, those elementary kids have a bad day.
Rhonda, you have a very diverse community. What does your board do to keep, help keep the focus on all students? Because your board really is elected from different constituencies across your beautiful city, so what does your board do to attend to that, focusing on all students?
So as a board, one of the things that I like that our superintendent does, we have advisory committees. So for example, as I mentioned earlier, I'm a counselor by trade, that's what my background is in, so mental health and work with the guidance counselors, and also I've done academic counseling here at Hopi for 15 years, so I have an affinity for the guidance counselors in the schools. And so our superintendent put me on an advisory committee dealing with mental health and also working with the guidance counselors. So I really feel valued as a board member, I feel included in the conversation, because typically, board members, you know, we're told, okay, this is the lane, you're a board member, you stay in this lane, you know, your job as a board member is to affect policy and different things like that. But our superintendent gives us the opportunity to work on different advisory committees to really have input, and so she values our backgrounds and our professional backgrounds and what we bring to the table. So that gives each board member an opportunity to see the district from a wider perspective other than just what's on the consent agenda.
Which makes sense, and you can tie right into areas that you have passions, interests, expertise around, and contribute in that kind of way, so, cool.
Right, but I will say, my first, and I keep saying ISB, this is not, you know, a plug or anything, but I did not understand very much about legislation, I knew nothing about contract negotiation, and the budget, the financial portion of how a district is run, it literally took me three years to get it. And so you're, you know, we have what's called the board, like the mini meeting, but it was too overpowering my first two years, so don't expect as a new board member to really get it all, be your first year or two, because it's not going to really happen unless that's something that you're knowledgeable about. But those, the toolkit were critical in helping me in going to those conventions, talking to other people, because what you'll learn is you're not as dumb as you think you are.
And everybody had to start somewhere.
Right.
Thank you. Jesse, what about you, any other insights to share?
Yeah, my first year on the board was very interesting. We knew that we were trying to pass a bond that we hadn't passed in a very long time, we were trying to, to try and to increase enrollment, you know, to be competitive with area school districts, and within our community was trying to grow. We had to hire a new superintendent within the first year, we knew that that superintendent was going to be retiring, and we had two new board members, myself and another board member, at the same time, so we had every challenge ahead of us, but the great thing was is we came together with the senior board members, when our school business official, our SBO, Jessica did a phenomenal job of helping us to understand, you know, what the money aspect worked, how that worked, what does, what all impacts that, and all the different accounts, and just really understanding our, not that we're trying to not understand, it's just overwhelming, because you're trying to drink through a fire hose, and at the same time, there's so many other things going on that everybody else thinks is a priority. And so I'd say when it came down to our board is coming together and working together as a team, we were a very solid team, our four, five board members, and then our superintendent and our board secretary, school business official, we came together and worked solid as a team, you know, we didn't agree all the time on everything, but we knew that we had to keep the focus on the main thing, and that was student achievement, and helping all students to find success. You know, in our school, it's a small school, it's one, we had two buildings, it's pre-K through 12th grade, and a lot of people will look at, say, athletics, because that's the thing that, that's what brings people to the school, to watch events, things like that, that's, there's more athletic events going on than maybe your fine arts or ACT testing day or a play. So there's more things going on at the school with athletics, so a lot of people will generally try to focus on that, when at the end of the day, that's not the main priority, it's student first, how do you become a better student athlete, a better student academia? And that, the academic side of things has really helped us to look at that with concurrent enrollment, and so working hand in hand with our local community college, you know, those are things that a lot of people, as a new board member, I had no idea about, I thought that our community college was a community college, we as a school did our thing as a school, and it is incredible, the things that they juggle all together, but the most important thing that, you know, when we're juggling these, all these million different priorities, is that priority of student achievement and focusing on the student first, and everything else comes after that.
So I'm hearing a real theme that learning is just such an important trait, and keep an open mind as you approach, if you're elected and become a new board member, and Jesse, your team is, really, both of your teams are solidly committed to student learning, and you're going to talk more about that in a little bit in the conversation with some specific examples, so thank you so much. So let's give our audience, attendees, a chance to take another poll, and this one is, now that we know that learning is such a critical commitment as a candidate and new board member, what area of focus are you going to tackle first as a, as a new board member if you're elected? And so the options are on the screen.
Is it, they could pick more than one, but we're encouraging them to narrow the number of things, actually, or they'll pick one?
Well, you know, now, that's a good question, it depends on how I set up the poll, it may be that everybody can only pick one, and so if you only picked one, then that was the one, and so, just for fun, let's see what the results show. Here we go, so Harry, do you want to give a quick overview?
Bet, and note to self, just be quiet on those polls and let them happen, so I'll work on that.
No, it's great.
So the areas that have percolated up to the top are school finance, policy, mental health, and I, my bad eyes, all of it.
I mean, all of it.
All of it, got it, got it, okay, so.
How can I just pick one?
There's omnivores out there that are going to sink their teeth in all of it, and eventually you have, you will, you will sink your teeth and pursue more learning across all those areas.
Absolutely.
Good to see that folks have some ideas in mind, what might be a starting point, they'll saying, how do you eat an elephant one bite at a time, so you just start to chop your way through it, so.
And be patient.
Alrighty.
Well, let's move on to goal two, which is exploring the board's role in student From ISB research, the research of others, and lots of years of working with boards, we know that board teams can, and they do, make a significant difference for students, especially when they play certain governance roles well. So let's take a look at what those are. So what do school boards do when it comes to making sure students are succeeding and learning well? Well, you know, as we talked, Harry, that can really be a mystery, so let's talk about what the governance work of the board looks like, and when it comes to student learning and student success. So I'm going to review three key governance roles of the board. So the first is, the board is setting high expectation, and that's really going after a strong vision, and charting a vision for the district, and setting powerful goals for student learning. This is really about believing that more is possible, that we can achieve more, and expecting the best possible future for the district. That's a really vital role that the board plays.
Bet, and be willing to commit that publicly and imprint to your community, here's our vision for kids, here's the direction we're headed, and then they hang with it.
Whether it's, we want all students to be successful in the global economy, or whether we want all students to be effective communicators, whatever that is.
College and career ready, whatever it might be, yes.
Having that conversation, and then feeling for dealing on that. And then a second key role directly related to that, you've set the vision and the goals, well now, it's critical to provide that support, and that support empowers the staff to reach the goals and make that vision a reality. This support can be different in different ways, it can be financial, making sure the budget allocates funds to reach district goals, but it could also mean supporting administrators and teachers when they take risks, and strive to improve, developing that culture that supports innovation. And then the third key role is monitoring, monitoring the system over time, asking the question, how are we doing in terms of reaching our goals and vision? This work includes things like hearing staff progress reports, right at the board table, bringing teachers and staff together, talking with the board, celebrating successes, and really important problem solving when needed, and asking good questions along the way, including, how as a board can we help?
I keep coming back to, anybody can have a vision and goals, but if that's support, and then that accountability, that monitoring progress, if those two pieces aren't in place, then they're just words on a page, and so those are such critical steps, and I kind of saw Rhonda and Jesse nodding out of the corner of my eye, so they get that, they'll be able to speak to some of those things as well.
So at this high-level policy role, it, boards really can impact student learning in a positive way, but let's hear from our practitioners now. Jesse, how are these three roles empowering at the board table as a board member?
I mean, this is your number one job as a board member, is to really to do that, is to, first and foremost, is to provide that vision and goals, and in order to do that, I think as a board member, you have to know what your role is, what's your job, and a lot of people, you know, I didn't know as a board member, it took me some time to figure it out, your two main responsibilities as a board member is to, one, to write, adopt, and write policy, and two is evaluate the superintendent. Anything outside of that is not really your lane, that's why you hire people to do that. So you hire a superintendent to run the school, you have administrators to run the curriculum, you have teachers to do their job as teaching, you have coaches do their job as coaching, and you have all the support staff to do their job, is to support everything else. So if you, as a board member, are getting in the way of that, you're kind of getting in the way of providing a clear vision and supporting goals. So I think as a board member, is to collectively, as a team, paint the picture, where do you want to be in five years as a school district? Where does our district think that we should be in five, 10, 15 years, and have benchmarks so that you kind of know where you're going? It's kind of like a GPS, and I feel, we've said this several times in our board meetings, is our job as board members is to provide oversight, to put in the GPS of where we think our school needs to go, and then you allow the captain of the ship or the superintendent to navigate that and drive, drive the ship, that's their job. And then every now and again is to do some support in there and ask, are we going in the right direction? Do you feel that the decisions that we've made have impacted in a positive or in a negative manner, and what can we do for that? I think as a support piece, that I learned more this year than in my first three years, was what's our role is local elected officials to work with state legislators, and two very key important things that were, in our district, in District Nine, Southeast Iowa, was passing the safe and transportation equity, and really being a voice for that, and supporting the superintendent, because they do their job in their meetings and SAI, and there are different groups pushing that, but our job was to work with the legislators. So I spent more time working with legislators this last year as a board member, and helping to support that vision and talking to those legislators of why this is important for our district. And so that was a way that we provided support to our superintendent in our school district. And then when it comes down to monitoring, is to hear updates, ask them to come to the board meetings, walking through the school, asking, did that decision impact your way of teaching, or did that impact student achievement? And where can we go, what can we learn from it? And I think those are the things that then you can bring back to the board table and share with your colleagues, and as a board team of, was our vision and were our goals aligned with the monitoring piece? And if not, then you can adjust everything, nothing is permanent, you don't have to stay there, it's not, you don't have to stay with doing the same thing over and over, is also the definition of insanity, so if something's not working, change it, and, but as a board member, I think that's the key thing, is to understand how to provide that vision, setting goals, support the superintendent and the school district, and then help monitor it as well.
Well said.
Great.
I can't say it any more beautifully than Jesse just said it. The only thing I would have to add is just that we're partners in education, more so silent partners, but you know, we're partners in education to support the superintendent to carry out that strategic plan, that guides, the GPS that he said, the benchmarks, the policies. Jesse nailed it.
I think, thanks, Rhonda, I was hoping to, I took a lot of notes from you from the last one, so I want to. I think, you know, the thing that I've learned as a board member and that I wish that everybody really fully understood was, that working relationship with the superintendent, you know, you have to have that, and just understand that there's a balance of empowering them and also asking to support them, and the things that you hear on the street, the pulse of the community, might not be what they hear at the school district. A lot of times, they're busy with the educational piece, with the instructional piece at the school, so the thing that you hear is to help provide that information to the superintendent so they're not blindsided, and so you work together as a team, but empowering them to do their job is so important. I see that a lot, just in the last year, working with other school districts, of just how important that is for school board members, is to allow the superintendent to do their job, you can go a long ways with that.
Right. It's probably, we talk about that, the most important relationship in the district is the relationship between the board and the superintendent, and that goes back to having that strong communication and working together. But you've given us some really important things to think about. Harry, do you have anything else to add?
No, I was sitting here listening, just thinking, yeah, how the board can continue to nurture and grow the superintendent's ability to lead, and how the superintendent and how the superintendent, that critical role of him or her nurturing the board's leadership. While you're all doing different work, but there's clearly a lot of overlap, intersect all along the way, so.
Then the election will bring opportunity for a brand new team to come together and build their relationship together with the superintendent and then decide together where they're going as a board team and chart that vision. So it's.
I just have one last thing to say with it. As far as empowering goes, you know, and I've said this before is we're, we're blessed with two ears and one mouth for a reason. So as a board member is, you know, to listen and to provide feedback and input whenever you see fit. But communication is so very important. It's not just show up at a board meeting and make some decisions without doing any research or talking, communicating with those that are in, in those positions. And trusting, I think if you could add one thing to those three vision support monitors, to add trust in there. Trusting that your administrators, your teachers, that everybody's doing the right things. Because nobody joins to be in education just to do it. They join because they have a passion to change lives and help others. And so when you trust them, they're doing it because they truly believe in they're doing the right thing. So allow them to do their jobs and your school district will prosper.
Which makes sense. And I, I think in fact, we see boards and soup's do this all the time. If you have a clear vision and everybody knows the target we're aiming for, that front loads the opportunity to build trust. We got clarity about where we're headed. And the same thing in terms of, as, as you establish clarity about what are the supports that the superintendent staff need to accomplish those goals. And you're hearing regular progress reports, those all contribute to building a trusting relationship, which is likely to help board superintendents stay on track.
Thank you. Very powerful thoughts from everyone. So let's move on to our third goal for today. And that's to talk about how board teams work to keep the focus on students when they are working together at the board table. Often board members tell us, and we see this ourselves during board meetings, they aren't spending much time on student learning, unfortunately. A lot of big and little issues vie for the board's time. That's just the reality of the work. Important issues such as building projects or finance issues consume the board's time at the meeting table. And this is, this is actually important and necessary for a period of time. But once those big projects are finished, it's important for the board to put the focus back on students during board meetings. Yep. Harry, do you have any insights that you want to add to that?
I think, and Rhonda, you helped out there, the, the right, because I agree with that. If there's a major construction project, facelift on one or more buildings, that's clearly going to vie for or compete for the board's time. So what does, what can the board do periodically to still keep the student learning, the teaching and learning work initiatives, whatever you want to call them, as board topics, board agenda items along the way? And then the second thing is that you, you mentioned Louis, when a building, when a district has accomplished or is well on their way with a major building project, or they've been through some heavy duty, heavy lifting on firming up the district's financial position, then it's critical for the board to ask themselves and the superintendent, what do we need to do? What can we do to establish habits so that we get our main attention back on the very reason we ran for the board? Now is to make a difference in kids' learning. And sometimes it's a matter of just having to reestablish, revisit, set some new habits again.
That's actually spending time at the board table over conversations about that specific topic.
That's right.
So let's hear from our practitioners now. I can, the PowerPoint to move forward. Let's have some insights from Jesse and Rhonda on keeping the focus on student learning. Rhonda, let's start, let's start with you on this one.
Well, I, I know that, you know, people say we should be able to, to walk and chew gum at the same time. I think that as a board, you're going to have your short term, your immediate, intermediate and your long term goal. And you're also going to have short, intermediate and long term activities or initiatives that will warrant you to have to divvy your time up accordingly. But for example, I'd like to personally invite you all to our upcoming, oh, that's backwards, right? Can you see that?
Oh, that's perfect.
You did.
Okay. So we, we too, Jesse, we had a bond referendum when I first sat on the board. That did not pass. Because sometimes when you're doing a major project, project that requires you to do a levy or a bond referendum, depending on what district or community or city you live in. Waterloo is deemed property poor in comparison to Cedar Falls, for example. So whenever people think that, that their property taxes are going to go up for anything, they'll shut it down. And you know, as a district, it's difficult to do a lot of major projects, especially building projects, if you don't have that bond referendum. So when that didn't pass, I was a new board member and I felt, oh my gosh, you know, this is, this is awful. We failed. But in essence, we didn't because a year or two later, although we didn't get the funds that we'd asked for, we were still able to build our career center, for example. And that career center is going to have far reaching implications for our students and for our community. But initially it was somewhat taxing, no pun, to, to deal with that right away. Because when you rely on your taxpayers to, to do things to help improve teaching and learning, it could go either way. So there will be times as a board member when you'll have to devote a lot of your attention to an immediate, a critical incident, a crisis. So for example, over the winter, the roof collapsed in one of our buildings. But fortunately it happened like at three or four o'clock in the morning, that morning, when we had a lot of snow. And as a district, we had to scramble to find a new facility that was, you know, move in ready for the students to not disrupt their, their learning environment. So you'll have those types of critical incidents where, yeah, we set policy, yeah, we look at the budgeting and long term, but you will have critical incidents that require you to deal with them right then and there, especially if you have a situation that makes national news, for example. As a board, sometimes you have to decide, what do we as a board, how do we speak or move as a board, separate or with the superintendent who has, you know, other things that she or he has to deal with. Does that make sense?
It does. And Jesse, you have an example of what your board did. Can you talk a little bit about that, your experience about keeping the main thing, the main thing?
Absolutely. So like I said, our first year was very, very busy with, we knew that we wanted to pass the bond or at least propose another bond that had failed several times for a new track. A lot of upgrades, new showers, just, you know, just over a $2 million bond. And so how we had to look at it was, Rhonda said it best, is your, your long-term plan will feed your midterm plan, which also feeds your short-term plan, and you, you can't do it in reverse order. You have to plan long-term first and then everything feeds it within. What we did, we were, we were working on all those things very effectively, working with the communication piece with the taxpayers of really communicating that, you know, we're going to be fiscally responsible with their tax dollars and that this increase in taxes was going to benefit students overall in our community. And luckily that the bond passed 88%. And so, you know, we worked tremendously hard on that, very, very proud that that worked. Our community came together and made that happen. And then we got sidetracked with looking at some small things. And that was the logo, the school logo, marketing items, fundraising items, and then it was coming to the board. And as a board, we, we eventually collectively said, we, as a board, don't think that that should be our priority. That, we are here already for a very short period of time for board meetings, that that should be delegated to those, in those positions that can make those decisions. And so that's focusing on the main thing. Our job as a board was to focus on that vision, that clear support, the monitoring piece, and allowing others to do their job. And we had a veteran board member that was relieved that we had come together and said that we're not going to, we don't think that we should be focusing on that, it's taking up too much of our time. That's, that's knife fighting, as we would say in my line of work is, you know, you're, you're, you're just getting through right now. You're not really feeding that midterm or long term. And so allow those, empowering others to do their job, really worked out well. And for several years now, we haven't heard anything about it. There's no issues with it and things are still moving forward. So, you know, empowering others to do, to do their jobs can really go a long ways. And so that helped us focus on the main thing of student learning.
And what I, what I hear is, both of you share your stories, is that there's a conscious reflection step that the board does. It's not like just by accident. But it's a conscious decision. Are we, how happy are we with how we're spending our time? And might we, it is limited. Are there things we can do to, to help make sure we're focused on the most important things that we want to and need to as a board? So good for both of your districts.
And, and the agenda would reflect that.
Absolutely.
And one of the things that we've done as a board just most recently is, is really asking for student groups to present to us and, and talk about the things that, that they're doing. And so we went, or one of our key initiatives a couple of years ago was to go one-to-one and get every, a computer in every kid's hands. And, and, you know, fiscally responsible with that, you know, it's a big investment upfront, but in the long term, it saves money. It helps them with the, with the 21st century of communication and networking and the internet and everything else. But we, we then have students present to us as a board, things that they're doing with that. And it's amazing just how incredibly talented students are utilizing computers. I have a second grader who can run a phone and a computer better than I can. She has all the new passwords. I have to ask her how to even get in. But it, it's just incredible. Once you empower students to do what they can do, what we can learn from them. And they teach us as an older generation of the things that we can do with technology. And I think that, that really worked out with, with keeping the focus on student learning with one-to-one. You know, and allowing teachers to teach in the classroom with utilizing a tool or this resource of computers and technology.
And both of you, as, as Harry said, gave great examples of keeping the main thing, the main thing. It's like you said, Harry, a conscious, conscious activity that the boards do.
Yeah, I was thinking along those lines too. This is back to earlier, Rhonda, when you mentioned getting more familiar with what's happening district-wide, not just my experience with my kid. And Jesse, you take your example of the times when teacher leaders and teachers, students might present or share something that provides the board a sense what they're doing in the classroom. When, when those sort of activities can happen at a, at a board meeting or a board work session, that's a great chance for all five or seven board members to have exposure and hear the same info at the same time. A common learning opportunity for the whole board. And I think, I think sometimes we probably underutilize those opportunities and they can be powerful.
Absolutely.
In the remaining minutes that we have together, we thought for fun, let's dig into a scenario that comes from real life, actually. This is Nancy Newcomer. She tries to follow through on her promise to voters after she won her election seat. So let's see what happens to Nancy. I'm going to read the scenario and then I will have our practitioners weigh in and provide some insights. Board candidate Nancy Newcomer ran for the school board for the primary reason to reopen the beloved historical Truman Elementary, the neighborhood school that the previous board had closed. After all, the Truman students deserved their own school. As PTO president of Truman Elementary, Nancy was successful and won a seat on the school board. True to her word, shortly after the election, Nancy met with the superintendent and board president about getting the issue of reopening the closed school on an upcoming board agenda. Now, in this scenario, Nancy is passionate about a single issue that really matters to her and her constituents. But as we shared earlier, the public doesn't always understand the role of the board and its charge in serving the best interests of all students. And this can be challenging for the public, but it also can be challenging for the school board team. So let's hear some insights and advice from our practitioners. Let's see. Jesse, let's have you go first on this one. What, what would you, what insights would you share on this one?
Well, first and foremost, I would recommend to any candidate or any school board member that maybe is running in and maybe forgot, but to never promise anything. Just because as one vote, you're very, you know, that's your one vote on a board, your one voice. So you, you really, one person can't do anything. And then there's quotes out there that, you know, one person isn't an entire orchestra. So as one person, you, you do provide insight and, and value to that. But I think if there's anything to promise, it's to promise to do the very best you can as a teammate, to work together and that you will help provide clear communication and fiscal responsibility to the taxpayers. But for, you know, ultimately, your job as a, as a board member is to promise that you're going to provide an outstanding opportunity for students to learn and grow and be future leaders of tomorrow.
Wonderful. How about you, Rhonda?
I can't really follow up from that because he, again, Jesse articulated.
Sorry, Rhonda.
No, no, so beautifully. And I mean, you don't over, don't promise. And I think some people who run for the school board, they don't really understand. It's almost like running for to government and school, you know, we're going to get rid of all the, you know, apples in the school that we're going to bring back sugar. You know, you, you can't overpromise until you understand how the district works. Until you get a firm foundational knowledge of what it takes to really implement changes and initiatives in the school district. Do not overpromise.
And I think that's so important, Rhonda, the idea of learning, because as well intentioned and as passionate as somebody might be about the example of reopening a building, if they give themselves a chance to learn and, and better understand the, the financial and the educational implications, then that, that might help temper your making a promise, because they could quickly find out, holy smokes, in order to reopen that building, here's, here's the cost, here's what we'd have to give up in educational experiences and other facilities for kids. And sometimes that learning will help the board member make, with the rest of their board team, make a decision that's really going to work in everybody's best interest. And that, and might provide an opportunity to change one's mind, given helpful background information. Nope. Time for me to be quiet. My timer roll needs to end here.
So in summary, let's just review the three big ideas for today. Board service is about serving all students. And board teams can and do make a significant and a positive difference, especially when they keep the focus on student learning, keeping that main thing, the main thing. I'm going to ask our practitioners, any last pieces of insight or advice that you would like to share with potential board members who are running for the board?
Yes, I'd just like to say, if you keep your eye on the prize, which is all of our students, any policy decision, any initiative or program or anything that you do will be the right thing to do as long as you keep that primary focus. That's the prime objective, is to serve all students. Everything else should follow and be in alignment with that.
Thank you, Rhonda. Jesse?
Um, yeah, I mean, I, I agree 100% with Rhonda on that, that as long as you keep the, the focus on students, everything will, will work out just fine. You'll get through it. As a, you know, I think as a, as a board candidate, as a board member, is to always remember that you don't know everything and that you should constantly be in a pursuit of learning.
Yeah.
You can never learn too much and things change in the blink of an eye. Legislation changes, rules change, laws change, money changes, formulas change. And there's so many things in the school that happen, that change nationally, state, local. Just cultures of lives change, you know, that you look year to year of the, the students that are in your classroom, that changes. And so maybe the struggles that are going on in day-to-day life, that can change daily as well. So one, you know, a student, one day, everything is perfect, their, their life is great. And the next day, maybe something happens at home and there, it's not the same anymore. And so that, just knowing that your decisions do make a difference and working together impacts all students. What's going on in your life isn't the, the story of all students. So just remembering that and, and working together. I, I can't stress enough just how important it is to be a, that valuable team member. When you walk into practice at, at the board table, that's your practice, you know? And so your job is to do the very best you can and to be positive. Because, I mean, attitudes are contagious. And I say in our, at work all the time is you can choose which attitude you have, a positive attitude or negative attitude. So if I'm going to show up to a board meeting with a negative attitude, I'm now going to be contagious to everybody else. But if we all show up with positive attitudes, we're contagious and we keep the focus on the main thing and that student achievement, student learning. And your school district's going to win, you're going to win, and ultimately, you're going to make a positive difference for the leaders of tomorrow.
Yeah. The final thing I want to say is that we need to be scholarly practitioners. That we should always seek to understand. And you're not going to know everything, but if you are a scholarly practitioner, what that means. what that means is whatever it is that you don't know about, get that training. Take advantage of those IASB toolkits. You're not going to be a resident expert, but at least you will have a solid foundational knowledge on all those things that you need to know.
I'd have to follow, Harry. Do you have any other insights?
Golden, thank you.
Yeah. Well, again, we, we hit the gold mine and jackpot asking Jessie and Rhonda to, to weigh in today because you certainly have so much to offer in terms of your experiences as board members. So as we wrap up, we're going to invite our, our attendees to submit any other questions that they may have and to contact IASB with any questions that, that we can provide to you. If you have any support needs, let us know. And speaking of learning, we have dedicated and committed, including these webinars, some additional time, Harry, to support new, newly elected board members. Please mark your calendars for November 20th and 21st for our statewide annual conference. It's our touchtone event on Wednesday and Thursday. And Harry, do you want to talk about what Wednesday looks like for new board members?
We'd, we'd love to see virtually every new board member elected that would come to the half-day session on the 20th. There'd be a morning and an afternoon session. And it's really geared at those first three or four months on the board. The go-to kinds of learning and situations that board members will, will, will encounter. So hope to see you there.
No accident, we're calling it thriving in your first 90 days, not surviving, but thriving, hitting the ground.
Can I add a plug for that as well?
Sure.
So I, I would say the convention is a phenomenal opportunity to learn. And like I said, it's an investment in you as a board member, as a board team. You should, you know, you should really focus on finding the funding for that, finding a way. You can always say no, but let's find a way to say yes. And, and to attend that pre-convention workshop, thriving in your first 90 days. Because you really don't know what you don't know. And if you go there and you allow the experts of IASB to help share that knowledge with you and you also then are networking with other superintendents and new school board members, senior school board members, other people will help teach you different things that you can maybe pick up on, take notes. But convention is something that I, I feel should be a must for every board member. If you really truly want to impact your school district in a better way, attending convention every year is one way to do that.
And I, I think as you, thanks for putting in the word about that, Jessie. I think we, we've done our best to, I mean, somebody may be thinking, holy smokes, I haven't even been elected yet. But we've made it as easy as we can so that after election, there is still time in those couple of weeks after the election to get registered, sign up for convention. Your superintendent, your board secretary or business official, they'll be able to help you with that. And we'll do our best to make it as easily and as painless as we can. And it could be that your, your district has already reserved slots and will just be waiting to fill in the names after the election.
Absolutely. Plenty of seats available, both on Wednesday and then following on Thursday, a full day of learning with our keynote speakers, breakout sessions, including a track dedicated for brand new board members. So come for the two days. We'd love to see you there. More information is available on our website.
And I just want to say, wish me luck on my election on November 6th. I'm running for reelection, so hopefully I'll get to see you all at the convention.
And just.
On November 5th, November 5th.
November 5th, your election. Jessie, are you up for reelection as well?
I am up for reelection as well.
So good luck to both of you and all our candidates out there. IASB is here to help you. We are just a quick phone call away. This webinar was recorded and will be posted on our website for viewing with our PowerPoint within 24 to 48 hours. Tomorrow, you will receive an email with a link to a survey about today's webinar. Please take time to respond. We really do look at that information and it helps inform our supports and services such as this one. On behalf of IASB, thank you once again for your participation in our digital conversation. Candidates and attendees, your willingness to learn today is one of the most important skills that we like to recognize as, as a board member. And Rhonda, Jessie and Harry, thank you for sharing your experience, insights and expertise with everyone today.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks so much, everyone. Take care.